Something that we would look at.
All right, yes.
And Joe, absolutely with veterans, as a veteran, fireworks, July 4th is my least favorite holiday. So I'd be happy to talk about that in depth next February around Valentine's Day. So we'll let the fireworks go off.
TJ, how are you?
I'm doing well, how are you?
I'm doing well.
I'm TJ Cameron, 2417 East Lopez Lane, Brandon. I'm actually the owner and managing member of Brandon Fireworks LLC, which operates across the street from the golf course. My fireworks, or my family's been in the fireworks business since my great-grandfather was one of the very first stands in all of South Dakota. So three, four generations. And as a business owner who sells fireworks, of course, to the cash register, to open up to shooting fireworks in town was great. But as a fireworks business owner for a very long period of time, I actually think we should consider reversing, reversing that at some point. The soon as somebody's house burns down from an artillery shell landing on their roof, the ordinance will change immediately. So, I mean, I've been in the business a long time, and I hate to say it because my business went up a lot last year. But in doing what's right for our community, there's definitely some liabilities that I think need to be considered. And I've seen, you know, some accidents too, in person and heard of them. So I just thought I'd give my two cents being a business owner.
And I will agree with you, TJ, to a point. But the reason that this ended up getting changed, and I initially was not a fan of changing it, was the fact that it was occurring anyway. And it was occurring at every other house. And from an enforcement standpoint, it was impossible for us to enforce. You know, we didn't have enough police officers to go enforce all of the people that were, and this was after education. This was after putting it out. This was after posting the ordinances at the stands. It was, you know, there was just a true disregard for that. So that's when we really took a real hard look at the issue with the chief of police and fire department. And came to the conclusion that we did today. But again, I'll back up the conversation that I had before. I'm proud of the fact that we discuss this every year and try to come to a general conclusion that suits everybody. Of course, that never happens. I mean, but, you know, we're certainly willing to talk about it again. But the ordinance that sits on the books today was after years of conversation and changing the ordinance to actually allow. I'm not a fan of arterial shells going off in the city either. I mean, I've got some neighbor, they just about take the windows out of my house because my next-door neighbor's doing them right in their driveway. Well, that's a, that's a pretty significant boom, and it rattles your whole house. I'm not a fan of that either. But, you know, we did kind of come to the middle of the road to develop the ordinance that we have today. So that's just a little history of where we were and where we are today.
Yeah, and I, you know, I wouldn't necessarily stand up here multiple times and argue against it. But I did want to put my personal opinion, even owning the business, setting, you know, my cash registers' interests aside, that there's definitely some risk. You know, just in my neighborhood alone, last year, when we did legalize lighting them in town, I went ahead and put on a free, you know, mini display in my neighborhood. But I safely put up barriers around, built walls. Couple of my other neighbors put artillery shells upside down in the mortar and actually blew it up right in their driveway, all over the grass, you know. So, you know, just something we really need to think about because I love the business and I don't want it to go away completely. You know, that'd be my worst fear is that something happens and then we say you can't even light a sparkler on the Fourth of July because it's a really important holiday to me. You know, for the personal reasons and also for the business reason, so.
Yeah, thank you for your input.
And I just remind people that there is also an obligation to clean everything off the streets and the yards the next morning. And you can get cited if you don't clean up properly either, so.
Yes, thank you for that reminder.
And it would be nice if you cleaned up your neighbor's yard if you got all your debris in their yard.
Yeah, and you know, also the don't shoot from the streets and the public right-of-ways that are in the ordinance. I think that anything we could do to educate the public would be important because a lot of people are shooting from the streets. You know, it's like any ordinance, it's kind of like the, you know, our watering program. You have to enforce it. So will we be able to enforce that like we'd be able to enforce the way fireworks were? So, you know, any ordinance, it's about the amount of effort and education you put in. So I think it's, you know, something, continue to think about. Like I said, it's great for a business, but it's just my.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion on fireworks? All right, employee health insurance renewal.
Casey was here last meeting with the good news that the rates will be going down 7.37% for renewal effective July 1st. Human Resources is currently undertaking the wage and benefits study for both public and private sector entities in the area.
All I can say is I'm in the industry and seeing a 7% reduction is unheard of. So it's hard for me to thank Casey. But as a whole, it says a lot for us, so.
It does, says a lot for our programs.
It's better than sitting here the year that we sat here when we took the 28% increase. So, awesome.
A big part of that goes to the city staff, working safe, working smart, reducing our risk portfolio because of that. So everybody that's in the room, that's staff, let's make sure to tell our people, good work on that because that really changes some of our modifiers on our insurance. So Raleigh, Donovan, Sergeant back there, you guys are doing the right thing by keeping your guys safe. You too, bud. So, and everybody in the city hall, it's important, you know, that we look at those things and it definitely impacts our rates. So saving the taxpayers money, so thanks a lot.
Do you want a motion in a second? I was assuming that.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
I have a motion from Hausmann, second from Parsons to approve the employee health renewal, insurance renewal discussion. If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Very good. It'd be nice to have another 7% deduction next year. Yep. Strategic planning discussion.
You have before you, there's what I'd call a brochure that Barb and I looked over. We met with a gentleman from Dakota Resources. I'm a big proponent for strategic planning. I don't believe the city as a whole has done this before. I've been involved with it with the Chamber, the Development Foundation. Barb and I went a few years ago to one in Garrettson that was put on by Makita, Lakita Groups. I was impressed with them. I was impressed with these people that did this. So I would like us to consider this process. I think Brian's been involved before, and I think you can have some short-term goals come out of it, say, three to five years. But I also think you can have some longer-term goals come out of it, say, 10 to 15 that I would think would be important. And you see here that I marked under that empower program that it's like a two-year process. It's not going to be what I consider cheap, but I don't consider it real expensive either. They say the range is there from 10 to 15. The actual cost is probably going to be closer to 20. If you look on that second page, there's like a à la carte, what I would call type of menu, but not having ever gone through it before. That would scare me to start picking things out of there. So I would, I would encourage us to go the empower route. I know that the communities of Yankton and Canton are going through this right now. I've not talked to any of them yet. I wanted to gauge the interest tonight from the council to know how to proceed with that. And then I'd also propose if we're in favor of proceeding, that at one of the next meetings, we could get one of the people from Dakota Resources to come in here and explain the whole process better than what I can do. But they involve everyone in the community. I mean, the school, Chamber, Development Foundation, other, you know, you could do Lions Club. You could just involve everybody, which I think would be important to do, but that's my two cents worth on that.
I want to say thank you because I think this has a lot of value, a lot of value. And I wish it would have been my idea. No, no, I'm just saying, I think this, that this truly does hold a lot of value for what we do and the positions that we sit in up here. So I certainly do support it wholeheartedly.
Chuck, would you, would you mind checking on references and seeing if they could come in sometime? Calling those folks? Yankton and Canton, just to see what their feeling is?
I can certainly call them, but about having them come in to talk to us.
No, 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 just to see what their, yeah, no, but I mean, having one of the guys come in. Unless we don't feel the need for that.
One of the things that excites me the most about this and some of the discussions we had earlier is the cooperative effort between the school, us as a council, and everyone else. That is such a key player in this community. And I know we talked briefly about how we would split that bill, if you will, up and work with those other entities. And I think that was a key piece to this with Dakota Resources. Chuck, I know you've done a lot of work on this already, and you have my support to move forward as you would see fit to try and make that relationship work with those other entities here in town. And then look forward to the request for the budget item.
So do the other entities know we're working on this?
I've talked to our Development Foundation group, they're supportive of moving forward. And at the next chamber meeting, I plan to bring it up then.
How about the school district? Because I have a problem with the school district not working with us real well. I mean, not a lot of communication, especially with, I mean, for me, but how do you spoke with them?
I can certainly approach them, Joe, the other groups, just because I knew I was involved, but I can certainly approach them. I know they're going through some planning right now just of their own, but I don't mind reaching out to them to ask.
I know we have somebody here in the room from the school, but I just, I think it's a big issue. And I would like the school and us to be more involved with what happens in the community. So if we're going to do this, I would like hopefully the school to be involved.
All right.
And if there is a connection with the school, before I took this seat, I had the opportunity to meet with the superintendent, and I'd be happy to help facilitate that in any way, shape, or form that you need, Chuck. Just please let me know when I sit in a meeting or whatever it takes.
Okay, anything else, strategic planning? All right, Development Advisory Committee.
So I have.
Yeah, yeah.
So I have before you the names that I've gotten so far of the interested people that want to be on this committee. And again, the committee would be nothing more than to just sit down and talk in general about codes, enforcement, things that may or may not be restricting residential, commercial growth. Just a real loosely formed group is what I had in mind. And there may be one other individual that may be joining us, he hasn't turned in his form yet.
How many? Do you want to cap it at a certain number, or do you want the more the merrier, or what?
I'm, I'm certainly okay with this group. And if you want to allow one other, he had expressed interest to me early on, but he didn't get his form turned in, so. And I'm not so sure, you know, you want to open it up so you have 50 people involved. But, you know, this seems to be a reasonable number for now. If it grew a little bit, I'm not going to be opposed to that either.
Council.
As far as the number, I guess I, I don't know what the answer would be or what the right answer would be. I would say certainly less than 10 or less, I would think would be an optimal number. But I just wanted to say thanks again, Chuck, because looking at these names, these are, this is a quality group of people that have been part of this town for a long time and would bring a lot of value to this committee. So, so thank you.
We all need, we. We all need to be prepared. What they say we may not particularly like or agree with, but we need to be prepared for that, so.
So one of the things, looking at the list, again, it's a lot of, like Blaine said, a lot of people that have been a big part of Brandon here in the past. Is there anyone that's more of an outsider that has expressed interest or that we could bring in to this group as well? To get someone that, maybe a developer that hasn't developed in Brandon before, that we could get some, some feedback from, from that standpoint? And then the other question that I had, format-wise, would this be similar to the Water Development Committee? Where we'd be expecting reports and suggestions from that committee to come to council?
I can certainly do that. I hadn't thought that far ahead, and I had reached out to one developer in Sioux Falls, and he declined to get back to me.
Should we make a motion to put a, put a cap on? I'll make a motion that we cap this at 10.
Or less? I have a motion.
10 or less, correct, Mayor.
I have a motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Hey, our first second.
I have a motion from Jones, second from Clark, to cap the Development Advisory Committee to 10 or less. Questions or discussion? So with you, Mr. Parsons, and I think I counted six. Yeah, I saw that. So that, so that would be six. So you're looking for one or two more? Is that probably it?
From what I know now, it'd be one more.
Okay. All right, that's all the discussion I had. Anybody else? If not, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you all.
Administration, anything else?
One other thing, could you make a motion to approve the members that are listed?
Okay.
That way we've got it, we've got it covered for workers' comp and all that good stuff.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to include, let's see, Ty Doll, Stan Shorman, Brad.
Gullickson.
Gullickson. Paul Lumber, Barb, sorry, and then.
Tom Howie.
Tom Howie. And then. I have a motion.
Second.
Thank you. Motion from Wakefield, second from Jones, to approve those members of the council. Discussion. If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you very much for reminding us. Yes, that's right, if we put a committee together, we need to have names for insurance. Anything else, administration?
No, Mayor.
Streets.
But she is up for streets now, so. Anything streets, Dana? She's sat in enough meetings already.
Um.
Oh, there he goes.
Got some summer staff.
Yeah, we'd like to hire Mason Van Weston at 10:15 an hour for the summer before he goes back to SDSU.
I'll make a motion to.
Second.
A motion from Hausmann, second from Clark, I believe you said that, I gotta get familiar with your voice, to hire Mason Van Weston at 10:15 per hour this year. He's going to start June 5th.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. If approved.
I told him if he's approved, he said he's ready to come to work, so.
All right. Okay. With that being said, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else, Streets?
Guys are out working on the microseal areas, hard and heavy with the blacktop. And we'll be moving into the crack sealing stuff before too long, so.
Excellent, excellent, thank you.
Thanks, Raleigh.
Item 12. Recommendation from Stockwell Engineers for street and utility improvements on Sylvan Circle, Rushmore, and Teton.
Yeah, I believe John briefed you at the briefing meeting. We had open bids last Wednesday. We had three bidders that submitted. Hander Incorporated, First Right Excavate, and DNG Concrete Construction. Hander Incorporated was a little bid at $609,825. We talked a little bit at the briefing meeting that the bid was a little bit higher than what we had initially estimated. We attributed that just to the bidding environment currently right now. Talking to some of the contractors, it's just later in the year, their schedules are fuller than they, than we anticipated. So that's, that's what we justified as the reason for that. But otherwise, you know, we did have two that are pretty competitive, and we feel they are competitive bids for this time of year. So pending available funding, we would recommend that if you reward, you would award to Hander Incorporated.
Well, we might have some discussion.
I'm extremely, oh, sorry. Go ahead. I'm just extremely concerned about just having three and then the dollars involved for a fairly small project like this.
So at the briefing meeting, it was discussed that we'd reach out to Hander Plumbing and Heating to see if there was any methods in which we could reduce this cost? Did that happen?
Yeah, we spoke to them about some of the items they had in their bid. There's one item in particular that kind of stuck out was the manhole rehab. And they would be willing to, you know, take that off the bid or take that with a change order if it was to get awarded. But that's really probably the only thing that stuck out, and I think that was $14,000 worth. Yeah, $14,375. So as far as negotiating the prices for, there's really no negotiating this price.
Given the discussion that we had on Thursday, and certainly the, the work that the council has put into this and understanding the Clark situation, I mean, we, we know that this is a, this is a prudent project that needs to be completed. However, that being said, I've been one that has been more vocal than most about pushing forward of this project, get it completed, because I think it needs to be completed. However, this number concerns me. And this number, I knew that this was going to come in high, and we knew that it was going to come in high because we were bidding late. I truly believe that there's a solution to this. And the solution to this is we don't award this bid, and we rebid this project as a inclusive project, including the Sylvan project that we had planned for next year. You know, not only would the bidding environment be better because we would be bidding earlier, I truly feel that we would be getting more bidders to bid the project. And because of the size of the project, the cost of the project would be considerably less. I'm all about getting this done. I mean, it needs to get done. But we also need to be the best stewards to our tax dollars. And I don't know that we are, and again, I'm throwing myself under the bus here because I'm the one that has pushed so hard for this. I don't know that we are by awarding this bid. That's an awful lot of money because we bid three months late. Everybody's busy, their calendars are full. We knew it would come in high. I certainly didn't feel it would come in this high. So I would propose that we do not award this project, and we postpone this project, and we bid it in January.
Is that a motion? Is that a motion?
Well, it's discussion, but I'll certainly make that motion.
I guess one thing I wanted to talk about, I did quite a bit of research on this project. Tried to understand the costing and understand, look at the bid sheets. And there's some things that are going on right now in the federal world when it comes to steel and tariffs and so forth that, that we're probably all very aware, well, well aware of. And what that's doing is, is it's driving up the cost. It's happening in the housing market, it's happening in the steel market, in the composites markets. All those things are driving up those costs. And yes, we did bid this late, and it's going to cost us. With that said, this project has quite a bit of materials in it that would be at risk for additional inflation through those federal tariffs that have changed. And when you look at the cost and talking with others in the industry, yes, they're very busy. They're already getting to the point where they have carryover work for next year that's starting to get into their schedules. So yes, there's the potential that we could save some costs by bidding it in January, February. But the risk of seeing those costs go up on materials could outweigh those savings. And that's really the feedback that I've been getting from digging in and talking to others in this industry is you're playing a game, and yes, it's, it is a game with the markets, right? And, and that's part of it. One of the solutions, when I looked at budget and trying to understand this project versus what we had prepared to spend, I, I took to heart what Chuck said about having to borrow the money and spend the money on the interest. We also have another project coming up that's currently out for bid for Redwood Boulevard. And that project is a storm sewer project, which has very little risk if we wait. And that project is estimated at about $200,000. If I was to put my thumb in the air, it's going to be about $250,000. The interesting thing with that project is it's mostly concrete. It's not your steels and your composites. The concrete market is much more stable. And being more stable, the chances of that project increasing in cost throughout the next six to 12 months, it's going to be a lot closer to whatever it bids here in the next week. So one of the thoughts that I had, and I'm new to this, so shuffling around money is not something I understand 100% yet, so you guys can correct me if I'm wrong. But what I would like to do is table the decision of the Rushmore project until we get the bids back on the Redwood project. So we can understand the total package of those two projects. Now, they're not combined, but it is combined in the budget. And when I look at the risk and the understandings of what happens by delaying the Rush, the Rushmore project, there, there is risk there. And that's why you've been so vocal about getting the job done, Blaine, and, and I agree 100% wholeheartedly. I've spent time talking to the Clarks, I've spent time understanding the system and talking to the engineers. I spent time talking with Paul. So in the end, I understand that there, there's a constraint on how much we want to spend. I'm just wondering if it makes sense for us to do some shuffling. Let's, I don't want residents complaining next spring about ice on Redwood Circle, and I get that. But that risk is much lower than sewer backing up in a home or a business. So if we shuffle that money around, it's still money we have to spend in the end. But does it get us in a better position where we're more comfortable by taking the capital improvement money from Redwood, using it on Rushmore to get that project done, because that is a much more volatile project?
I would agree. But I would agree in context that we not award this project currently until we have an opportunity to better dissect this, you know. And I agree with you, and believe me, I've been paying attention to the tariffs in the Trump administration and exactly what's going on in that market. But composites and concrete are much of what we're looking at in this Rushmore project, too. There's not a lot of steel built into this project. So there's always a risk in construction with delay. There's always risk. You can talk to any developer, you can talk to any excavator, any, I mean, there's, there's cost increases every year. It's called inflation, so there's always risk. But this project, in my opinion, came in at $160,000 higher than what we anticipated, and it's a relatively small project. If we could combine that into an already 1.2, 1.5 million dollar project and combine it together, I think there would be true savings, and the savings would relate back to our citizens.
And I agree with combining it with a big project. I just want to make sure we're clear that when we go to a larger project, what that does is it changes the, the individuals that are going to bid it. So in certain cases, companies are comfortable with certain dollar values. They're, they get bonded very easily for a million-dollar project. So when you step into the $2 million project, that's going to be a different group of people bidding it, and their insurance values are different, which you would know. So at this point, I think we have a bid that is valid, and it's valid for 30 days. And the general feel that I have from the council is we don't want to award that bid yet. We have some research to do. So with that said, I'd like to make a motion to table the recommendation from Stockwell to move the Sylvan Circle, Rushmore, Teton project to next meeting so that it allows us to have time to have further discussions and understanding any cost implications.
All right, I have a motion. And a second to table the bids for the street and utility improvements on Sylvan Circle, Rushmore, and Teton until next council meeting, which would be the 18th of June, so that we can gather more information on other bids and.
I just wanted to say I agree with what Blaine has said, I agree with what Tim has said. I don't see a need to table it. I agree with Blaine's first motion to just reject it and bid it again, whether you bid it again later this fall or next spring. That's what I think we should do.
And on Thursday, I, you know, I knew it'd come in higher, but now I've had some discussions. And I have to go with Blaine's original as well. I think we should table it until next year and really start honing in on the whole project as a whole. And it's actually not going to be 1.5, it's actually going to be closer to 2 million per our conversation Thursday night. So it's going to be 1.8 to 2 million dollar project, if, but then we'll get all of it done all at once.
I just want to interject, Councilman Clark. You can certainly speak as a private citizen, but you can't vote and provide input. So, I just want to make sure we didn't have that discussion, so, thank you.
Well, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong. We can either pull a motion, or we can vote on the motion and strike another motion.
Your motion didn't get a second.
Right.
So, the only motion I have is this one and the one you second. Okay?
And I, I will say, it, it didn't get a second, because we went right into conversation. We didn't get a chance to get a second. So, I thought I asked for a second.
Adam Clark again, 417 East Switchgrass Trail. Hey, just, so, are we considering, I mean, if we delay the project or table it right now, are we talking in January? Is that what you're kind of considering as a group here?
Yeah.
That would be the next.
The bid.
It would go into a bigger project, and then we would, it would, it would be slated for beginning construction next spring.
Next spring.
Okay, thank you.
Well, but that wasn't the, the motion and the second. That was for next, in two weeks.
It's the decision to table, is the motion.
Yes, yes.
I call a question.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to table it till next council meeting, which would be the 18th of June, for more information. With that being said, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I will again make the motion to not award this project at this time.
It would, it would be a motion to reject the bids.
Semantics, I will make a motion to reject this bid.
Second.
A motion from Jones, second from Hausmann to reject the bids. And that's your motion, reject the bids.
Reject the bids, yes.
Alright. With that being said, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Alright. So, what you're asking them to do is to combine a couple projects?
Oh, yeah, that falls.
I'd like to make a, just, let's get it on the agenda for the next time, to bring this back to discussion. And let's, if we can, gather as much information and have a truly educated discussion on how to move forward as quickly as we can if we need to combine these projects.
Alright.
Because I do understand where the Clarks are. You know, I will say, I'm handing it to Raleigh. We're trying to do the best that we can to try to manage a situation there, and, and let's hope that we don't have another situation from the time that we do to the time that we dig it up. But, again, as Tim would say, everything has risk.
And one thing that we discussed at the briefing meeting was putting together and on record, what we as a community, as a city, are planning to do to, to maintain this until it is fixed. We talked about having Raleigh check the manholes weekly, do jetting monthly. It was something that I brought up as potentially even being a letter that we provided Clark Insurance to what we were committed to. We've, we've left them on the sidelines, if you will, for the last seven to eight years with this situation. And obviously, we're making effort towards fixing and mitigating the, the issue. But, at the same point, we're now, based on the results of the motions tonight, pushing that out for another six to eight months. And it'd be nice if, if we could do something to wrap that all up in a package and say, we're going to do this, 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 and this, so they understand what the goals and objectives are.
Well, and I think, in all honesty, I think that there's, that would be redundant in the fact that our minutes reflect everything that we do up here as a council. I don't feel that the city needs to formulate a letter outlining what we're going to do when we historically have shown them what we're going to do. Raleigh's here now. We talk about how often we're over there checking that. I would not be a fan at all of putting a letter like that together.
But, with that being said, Clarks, I thank you for being as patient as you have been. And you guys have been the utmost respectful and professional. And for that, I'm very thankful for that. We will get this project done. It's just came up so much higher than what we originally anticipated. So, if we're going to do it all together, we might be able to get actually a better price, putting the whole project together. And that's after discussion with engineers and everything else that finally resonated in my mind that this could happen. So, but, we will get it on, back on the agenda for you.
Any other business before council?
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
Motion from Jones, second from Hausmann for adjournment. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.